Good morning. I'd like to call the Metro Council Business Meeting to order. It's May 15, 2025. Georgia Lee, please call the roll.
Counselor Nolan?
Present.
Counselor Wong?
Present.
Counselor Rosenthal?
Here.
Counselor Lewis?
Present.
Counselor Simpson?
Present. Good morning.
Counselor Gonzalez should be here shortly, and Counsel President Peterson?
Here. Thank you. All right, we will move into public communication on non-agenda items. Georgia, will you please describe the audience or procedures for public communications on non-agenda items?
Yes. If you are testifying in person, please sign up by filling out a blue card in the back of the room and bringing it up to me if you have not signed up in advance. If you are testifying on Zoom or by phone, please sign up by using the Raise Hand function in the Reactions or More menus, or by dialing *9. When it is your turn to testify, I'll call your name or phone number. For those on Zoom, click Accept to be promoted to a panelist. Your Zoom window will close briefly before you rejoin as a panelist. You can turn on your camera if you'd like. Testimony is limited to three minutes, and the timer begins when you begin speaking. If you are testifying in person, there are timers located at the testimony table, on the wall, and on the digital screen. Please state your name for the record before testifying. You do not need to give your physical address. And Counsel President Peterson, we have a few folks who have signed up to testify today. The first one is Art Llewellyn. And you can sit at any of those.
My name is Arthur Llewellyn. I've been an advocate for transportation system planning in Portland for more years than everyone sitting behind me have been alive. That's how long I've put an effort into steering projects to productive outcomes. And I am not here today as a friendly witness to the current council. I consider, as transportation system go, you are all utterly incompetent, just disgracefully incompetent. And the three projects that I list in over my years of study are the Columbia River Crossing HI5 project, the Southwest Quarter MAX extension to Tiger, thank God voters voted it down, and this latest plan for the Rose Quarter. Astonishingly bad engineering. I made a few appearances over the last months to try to make my case for what can be salvaged on the Rose Quarter project. And they are the new entrance southbound from Widler. Now, as far as I can tell, it's no longer on the table, but that would reduce surface traffic demonstrably, make safer. And I say the exit southbound on Front Broadway, you're moving into Wheeler Way just south of... That's a hazard in the making, rear-end pileups, collisions, injuries, fatalities. It has to remain where it is. And the exit that's now proposed, I don't know if it's possible, but it's ODOT's design for exiting to go eastbound on Widler. That looks to me like it would work and makes traffic manageable. But I don't know if it's work, Paul. We've got this little pin and inked, a little line drawing there from ODOT about whether logically it will work or not. I came to you last week and asked if you would read this. Some of you would read this. I don't expect an answer. Yes or no? What I expect is it takes me seriously, and I'm going to say I'm on to a serious perspective on transit system planning that may, I think, become a white paper study at a credible transportation institute. I don't need your opinion on why I say electric buses don't convert to... Standard buses don't convert to electric very well. No, they don't. Nor do the old-school buses. They don't. And nor do the paratransit lift bands. Oh, boy, you're just doing so great with converting all these obsolete chassis to electric and calling it good. So one more three-minute exercise in testimony in the future is probably necessary to make my complete case.
Thank you, Mr. Llewellyn.
It's Llewellyn. Llewellyn?
That's not what I said. I have allergies, so I apologize if it didn't come out right. Thank you. Next, we have Veronica Friesen.
Good morning.
Good morning. Is it possible if Jose could also do it first?
You can both come up. Thank you. We have Jose Medina?
Yep.
Yep.
Can I do this first?
Yes, you should go first.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you. My name is Jose Medina, and I am here to expose the situation that happened while I am employed at the convention center through Levy Restaurant. And I'm here today to talk about kitchen management at OCC and how they have mishandled harassment. Back in September of 2024, in 2024, a female and a male employee told me... Because I am a lead, I'm a team lead over there. I am their boss. So the female and the male employee told me about issues they were having with another lead steward. The female crew member told me that the coworker, that his coworker, the other lead steward, had been constantly groping, groping and touching her in a sexual manner without her consent and asking her how she likes to have sex and in what ways she likes to be in bed with a man. The male employee told me that the same coworker, the same lead, had made death threats against him. He said he had reported it to the senior executive chef, which is Mr. Alan Wamba, but nothing has come out of it. There was no investigation and no disciplinary action against the offending employee. I went to speak with my executive steward and related to her what had been told to me by the female employee, thinking she would follow protocol and immediately speak with her superiors. But instead, the executive steward, very angrily, very angrily, told me that I shouldn't be spreading rumors and I needed to shut up and mind my own business. Shortly after that, at the request of the executive steward, I was disciplined and demoted from my lead position. Levy had never demoted a coworker in this way before. The charges against me were vague and flimsy. The discipline was later removed through the union grievance process. Meanwhile, the worker accused of violent threats and serious sexual misconduct was not disciplined in any way or even suspended pending investigation, which is a standard procedure when a worker is accused of something very serious. When we asked HR and the executive chef why no action was taken in the case of the sexual harassment, they said that the stories didn't match up. It is not surprising that the accused employee would deny such things, of course, and there was no evidence to back up his denial as well. I filed a report through the Compass website reporting that the kitchen managers were corrupt and were not handling violent threats and other harassment appropriately. The process called Speak Up is supposed to be confidential. By several of my coworkers were told by HR and the senior executive chef that I had done this, so they spread the rumor, they spread the word that I had done it. But not only that, the senior executive chef, who was implicated in my report, was one of the ones who questioned me about the Speak Up complaint. I don't think that is appropriate or ethical. The person accused of violent threats and serious sexual harassment still works at OCC today. Some of my coworkers feel unsafe working with him. We are coming to you because we have lost confidence in our senior executive chef and his willingness to do what it takes to hold people accountable and keep our work environment safe and hostility-free. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'm assuming you're talking on the same topic, so we'll wrap this up after you talk and talk to our COO. So go ahead.
Okay.
Thank you.
My name is Veronica Friesen. We're here today because our kitchen management, led by the senior executive chef, has repeatedly failed to take the proper steps to address workplace harassment in the OCC kitchen. Coming to you with this is not something we do lightly or without substantiation. We've spoken repeatedly with kitchen management, HR, and other local management, as well as regional directors about the situation. And now we're coming to you. Our executive chef has a history of mishandling sexual harassment in violation of Metro and Levy harassment-free workplace policies. In 2023, kitchen managers received multiple reports that a worker, we'll call Theo, had repeatedly made multiple unwelcome advances toward at least three women and had persisted even after it was clear the advances were unwelcome. The women reported that he cornered women, touched them without consent, and made comments about their sexual preferences. The senior executive chef violated Metro harassment-free workplace policies in the following ways. He did not document the reports at the time. He did not inform HR until the behavior had been happening for some time. Initially, he did not take the appropriate action to stop the behavior, choosing to have off-the-record informal conversations with the alleged harasser. No discipline was issued prior to 8/14/23, but the harassment had been going on for some time, and HR was not involved in that discipline. Theo was eventually fired for attendance. Because much of his behavior was undocumented, he was rehired, despite the senior executive chief and other kitchen managers being fully aware of reports that he was a serial sexual harasser. Soon after, there was a report of him making unwanted advances towards a coworker again. He was at that point fired for harassment. We escalated all of this to a regional director. We assured that OCC kitchen management would do a better job of handling harassment. This brings us to September of 2024. Jose has shared the details of that, but I want to highlight some aspects of the case. We spoke to the woman who was sexually harassed. Her account was detailed and remained consistent after multiple tellings. She was afraid to come forward, and when she did, her managers failed to keep her safe, choosing to believe her harasser over her. She told management that another worker had told her she was being harassed by the same man. That woman was never questioned by management. Reportedly, the same worker who harassed her also threatened to stab a coworker, and he was not questioned until about several weeks later, when it came to regards of Jose's report. What we have here is a pattern of the senior executive chef mishandling harassment in the OCC kitchen. After escalating the issues with the mishandling of Theo's conduct, we thought things would change, but that was not the case. We're asking you to help ensure that we have a safe and harassment-free workplace. Thank you.
Thank you, and obviously, serious allegations. And I want to take them very seriously. I think the entire council does. I think every woman in this room probably has had some sort of experience and wants to be believed and wants to be heard.
Should be.
Should be. That's a really good point. Must be. And I just want to say thank you for coming forward because it takes a lot of courage to do so. And obviously, you felt like this was the only place you had left, so thank you for coming. I'm just going to look at our COO, Marisa Madrigal. I know you're under the Levy contract, and so also our attorney, Carrie McLaren, to help us through maybe next steps.
What I was going to suggest is perhaps the three of us could step out and I could get your contact information, and then we can follow up about next steps. Does that work?
Okay.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for coming in.
Okay, next, we have Connor Lynch. And you can choose any of the four chairs there.
Good morning. And if there's several of you, we could...
Yeah, and if the other, if Birch Clark and Shania Berry also want to sit here, you guys can be on deck for your next testimony.
Good morning. Go ahead.
Good morning, members of Metro Council. My name is Connor Lynch. I'm a PSU student of Public Health and Nursing, and I live in Goose Hollow, Portland. Lately, I have taken more of an interest in the civic processes of local housing and homelessness-related issues. Today, I'm here to recommend steps towards a more inclusive and accessible path for hosting public voices in these meetings. Portland and metro government parties have made it clear that they are interested in prioritizing what the public deems important, but speaking very generally, so few individuals make their way in before you all. I appreciate when community members invite community organizations or service providers to weigh in on agenda issues, but further social media promotion of these meetings will reach even more everyday individuals. To continue, I found the Metro Council website very unintuitive and likely to create barriers to this ideal informed public participation. Even considering myself more of a tech-savvy person, I had issues navigating through many links and unclear information while trying to attend meetings online. I noticed the preservation of many recorded meetings under the Live tab on the eGov, PDX, and Oregon Metro YouTube channels. Maybe displaying a dedicated link to these pages alongside a schedule of meetings on the website can be a straightforward solution. Having clarity within information systems and with things spoken aloud may break down many potential barriers for people. Finally, to comment on what happens during meetings, I've noticed the lack of a mediator to remind members of the governing body to speak inclusively when deliberating such important issues. This can look like providing appropriate context when referring to agendas of previous meetings or offering a glossary or explanation of acronyms beforehand. Ultimately, my ask remains that the delivery and promotion of local government meetings, especially looking forward to topics of the ONE Housing Plan and the Metro Supportive Housing Services renewal, are made accessible to as many people as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you for pointing that out. Our comms department is actually working right now on a reset of the website and update for clarity and being able to move forward. And I know actually Shane, Deputy Attorney, has been working on plain language as well within all of our legal documents so that it is easily accessible. And we catch ourselves almost every single day on acronyms. So thank you for bringing forward all of those ideas and keep it coming. Thank you.
Okay, next, we have Shania Berry.
Hello, members of the Portland Metro Council. My name is Shania Berry. I am a student at Portland State University, and I am taking a course on housing and homelessness issues in the Portland area. I also have experience working in the field, building tiny homes for unhoused community members. As a student studying homelessness, this has made me more aware of the difficulties the unhoused face in their day-to-day lives, especially when it comes to health care. Living on the streets is hard, and it makes you more susceptible to all kinds of illnesses. It is difficult for those with infectious and non-infectious diseases, such as heart and lung disease, diabetes, mental health issues, disabilities, and more to be checked on when they don't have a way of getting to the hospital, which is why organizations that offer on-the-street care have a major impact on the unhoused population in keeping them feeling physically and mentally supported. Today, I would like to discuss organizations such as these need for funding. The Joint Office of Homelessness Services is one such organization which provides funding for services like the Portland Street Medicine, who completed over 6,000 care engagements in 2024, Street Services Coordination Center, and Cascadia Health, a community-based behavioral health provider. These organizations take the funding that this council provides and turns it into direct action on our streets, aiding homelessness prevention services, medical care, emergency housing, and hiring staff to execute their mission. According to the 2023-24 Joint Office Housing Services Budget Report, approximately $110 million in funding, accounting for 47% of their funding for that year, comes from the metro government funding, with the majority of this funding coming from Measure 26-210, the same measure which this very body, this task, was managing. Because of this funding, together, these organizations were able to provide services for many individuals in crisis, including transportation services, in-field medical care, and much-needed behavioral and health services to those in need. Unfortunately, Multnomah County may be facing a $104 million budget shortfall for homeless services. Although these organizations are providing much-needed services to our community, they do not have the capacity to support everyone who may need their services on such tight budgets. Right now, there are approximately 14,000 unhoused people in the metro area who could all benefit from the services provided by these organizations. Yet, these budget cuts could mean that even less people receive the care that they need. Because of this, I ask for an increase in funding that could further close the gap between supported and unsupported unhoused people in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have Birch Clark. Your time will begin when you start speaking.
Hello, Council President and members of council. For the record, my name is Birch Clark, and I'm a student at Portland State University. I come here today as a person born and raised in Oregon and a current resident of Multnomah County and as someone who has experienced housing insecurity. As we look towards November's ballot, when the Supportive Housing Services Measure 26-210 is up for renewal, I am proposing that additional language be included to dedicate a percentage of funds to serve homeless youth. I am asking that a Housing First model be adopted that specifically includes youth. Even though I have lived, experienced navigating Supportive Housing Services, it wasn't until this year, when I took a class at PSU about housing and homelessness, that I understood I had experienced housing insecurity as a young person. I hadn't known that sleeping in a living room with blankets hung as walls and spending over half my income on rent had a term, which is rent burden. Housing insecurities and homelessness are so commonplace in the queer community, especially among young people, that the experience can easily slip through the cracks. Intersecting identities, including race, class, addiction, and mental health status, often compound to create more barriers for at-risk communities. Housing First is a solution that at-risk populations need. I advocate for the Housing First model to be utilized locally, specifically the need for immediate long-term housing for youth 16 to 24, with an emphasis on the legal hurdles that youth 16 to 18 face when attempting to obtain housing as minors. According to the National Alliance to End Homelessness, youth make up 10 to 15% of homeless population on average. Still, they are often underrepresented in funding because adult homelessness is more visible and politically prioritized. According to the Department of Education, in 2023, Oregon had the highest rate of families with children and unaccompanied youth navigating housing instability of any state. These stats show why additional language in regards to Housing First for youth to the SHS measure is crucial to supporting this underserved population. A group of fellow PSU students and I have taken the initiative to craft an example of what that language could look like. It would be an addition of a Population C, which is a dedicated percent of funds will be devoted to Housing First services for the Population C, defined as youth 16 to 24, with an emphasis on the legal hurdles that youth 16 to 18 face when attempting to obtain housing as minors who are experiencing homelessness or have a substantial risk of experiencing homelessness. We're asking you to add the language in this upcoming measure to specifically include youth in a Housing First approach. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming in, and thank you to your classmates for supporting your testimony. I appreciate the time that you've spent in the class and outside of the class, not just researching, but being part of the solution. And we will take all of this information and include it in our ongoing discussions. And I would love to come talk to your class in the future about this and what we're doing. I'd also invite you to come and watch the president's work group as they work to reform the measure. It was put together in three weeks, five years ago. That's not normal. Normally, it takes us 18 months. So we've had a lot of things that we need to clarify. And those things are roles and responsibilities regarding Metro's role in this, the county's role in this, the city's role in this, providers' roles, advocates' roles. Those were not clearly defined. And then measures of success were not clearly defined. So we're trying to come up with KPIs at this point to be able to specifically say, what are we trying to achieve? And make sure that we are working through the data collection so that we can follow the trends to see if it's actually working. So there's a lot of work, and I would encourage you to continue to follow us and add your voice to that mix. So thank you. Counselor Rosenthal, you raised your hand.
Yeah, I'd just like to make a comment. First of all, I support what you said. And I just want to comment that when we passed the measure, we talked about Populations A and Populations B. And many times, I've asked various providers in the field, do the youth fall into Populations A or B? And they go, yes. And the answer, the meaning of that is it's difficult to categorize population because their situations are changing. And so we recognize that, and I think we recognize that. They need more services and more consistent services throughout the metro region because youth are also more, shall we say, flexible in terms of where they live. So thank you for bringing this to us.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Counsel President Peterson, I see no one else in the virtual audience or the physical audience.
Awesome. Thank you. We will close public testimony on non-agenda items and move on to the consent agenda. Counselors, there's one item on today's consent agenda, and it's Resolution Number 25-5497 for the purpose of confirming the reappointment of members to the Metro Committee on Racial Equity or CORE. Do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
Counselor Gonzalez moved to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
It's been moved by Counselor Gonzalez and seconded by Counselor Lewis. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Excuse me? I thought I heard somebody want to speak. All those opposed? All right, the motion passes. Thank you.
We'll move on to resolutions. We have two resolutions before us today. Resolution Number 25-5488 for the purpose of adopting the Regional System Fee for fiscal year 2025 and '26, and Resolution Number 25-5489 for the purpose of adopting solid waste fees at the metro transfer stations and metro community enhancement fee for fiscal year 2025-26. As both resolutions pertain to fees for solid waste in the region, we will hear a single presentation from our staff, then take up the resolutions one at a time. And per our testimony that we just had, this is all done within the context of the budget. And before we actually move forward with our budget, we need to approve the new fees for the coming year. So we have Cinnamon Williams and Patrick Dennis here to present. Cinnamon's back up. I can see that. Yes.
Good morning, Metro Council President Peterson and Metro Counselors. We have a short presentation. I'll wait till that shows up to begin. Great, thanks. For the record, my name is Patrick Dennis. I use he/him pronouns, and I am the WPEZ Waste Prevention and Environmental Services Department Finance Manager. Next slide, please. I have a brief presentation for you today, summarizing the budget and fee engagements, reviewing the fee-setting criteria, the review of the rate models, the proposed fees, then walking through the two resolutions for your consideration today. Next slide, please. Over the last month, the Waste Prevention and Environmental Services Department has engaged in a variety of forums and with a variety of stakeholders on the proposed budget and fees. Starting with the proposed budget and preliminary fee presentation to council... Starting with the proposed budget and preliminary fee presentation to council on April 15th, followed by a budget forum that WPEZ hosted for local government, nonprofit, and industry partners. Then, the Regional Waste Advisory Committee, ARWAC, had an opportunity to provide input on WPEZ's budget and preliminary fees that was presented to you last week alongside with the updated proposed fees. This week, WPEZ hosted two sessions with ARWAC to provide updated fee information, gather additional input, and answer any questions. The committee members that were able to join this week provided feedback for an improved process next year and expressed their appreciation in WPEZ's follow-up efforts. Yesterday, WPEZ also presented the budget and updated fees at a local government administrator, administrators' policy work group. This robust and important engagement effort was possible because of the support of Chair Nolan and Vice Chair Lewis's leadership in ARWAC, the active participation of ARWAC, our partners in a variety of forums, and the tireless effort of WPEZ staff culminating in today's consideration of the two resolutions. Next slide, please. A quick reminder for council of the prioritized fee-setting criteria developed in coordination with the Waste Fee Policy Task Force in March 2024 that helped guide the development of the proposed fees being considered today, providing an accessible and equitable system that prioritizes keeping valuable materials out of the landfill while remaining affordable and elevating our partners within the system. Next slide, please. As specified in Metro Code, the fee models underwent a review by an independent third-party consultant. FCS Group reviewed the models and fees for accuracy, adequacy, reasonableness, and compliance with industry practices. This review successfully concluded at the end of April, and the written memo is included within your council packet. As a reminder to council, WPEZ will issue an RFP this summer to engage a consultant to build a new, simpler, more streamlined single model that maintains clear separation between the regional system fee and the solid waste fee programs. Next slide. As presented in last week's meeting, here is the summary of the updated proposed fees after the third-party independent consultant's review of the two models. Next slide. Following council direction, WPEZ has been diligent in keeping solid waste fee and regional system fee funded programs separate. As part of this effort, the adoption of fees is now separated into two resolutions for your consideration. As the resolution name suggests, Resolution 25-5488 for the purpose of adopting the regional system fee for fiscal year 25, '26 will set the regional system fee effective July 1st, 2025. Whereas, the Resolution 25-5489 for the purpose of adopting the solid waste fees at the metro transfer stations and Metro's community enhancement fee for fiscal year 2025, '26 will set the solid waste fees and community enhancement fee at Metro Central and Metro South transfer stations as presented in Exhibit A effective July 1st, 2025. This concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Counselors, any questions for staff? Any comments? Council Lewis.
Sure, thank you so much. I really want to appreciate the work that you did for a transparent, fair process, in particular, looking at the review letter coming in after our last input session and kind of rushing to have some office hours, so interested parties could see and dive in with any questions. So, in review of the FCS letter, I think we have both details on this rate-setting process, but also our map forward for the new model, which I'm excited about. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Council Lewis.
And thank you, Council Lewis and Council Nolan, both for this work to move us forward as well as staff. Thank you. Council Rosenthal, did you have something you wanted to add to either one of these resolutions? Now would be the time to make it known.
Well, I was going to make an amendment, a small technical amendment, just to clarify some language, but I was waiting until we actually made a motion to adopt the resolution. So, but I can do it now.
Just, just.
I think President Peterson, if I may, and Council Rosenthal, I think what President Peterson was going to be suggesting, Council Rosenthal, is that you explain to your colleagues right now what the nature of your amendment would be and why, so that you could call up, we could, OMA or Shane Adman at all if you wanted to. And then, you are correct, Council Rosenthal, you would actually make the amendment once, once, once it was on the table.
I'd be happy to. If, if you look at Resolution 25-5488, under the final, under the therefore, it says, resolves as follows, it does not specify the units for the cleanup material, just says $2.50, that could be per ounce, per, per kilogram, per, per load, per day, or who knows what. My understanding is that the Metro Code Chapter 5.02, I've had staff check, this does not entirely clarify that. So, just adding the units, which is per ton, I mean, we all know that it's per ton, but since this is a resolution, it should be clear. So, that's just a, there's a similar lack of units in the second resolution, but that is clarified in the code text, apparently. So, that's not necessary to change. But that would be the intent, just adding two short words to the text.
And I'm sorry, that was for 25-5488?
5488, yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you. So, do we have a proposed motion?
We can, I think what we would say is, Council Rosenthal, essentially what he said, would move to amend the unit of measurement to make clear by adding the words per ton after each fee that is listed in that resolution, and then that would make that unit of measurement clear. We can make that form of motion for him when you have the matter on the table.
Thank you. Okay, perfect. All right, with that, do I have a motion for Resolution Number 25-5488?
Nolan moves adoption.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilor Nolan and seconded by Councilor Lewis. Council Rosenthal, would you like to make your motion?
Yes, I would like to make an amendment to the motion to add the slash and ton after 250 under Item 1 in the resolve, and the same slash and ton after Item 2.
Great, we call for a roll call on that?
It needs a second.
Oh, I'm sorry, it does, thank you. Does anybody want a second? The addition of per ton. Anybody on council would like to second? All right, well then.
It fails.
It fails. With that, we will move on, and did everybody understand we were just adding per ton?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Council Wong, I know you want to ask a question. Is, oh, go ahead, you go first.
I just wanted to clarify with the staff that that was the intent, and that this clarifies it.
That's correct, that was the intent. It was not explicitly written in there, as Councilor Rosenthal stated, and to be more clear within the resolution, adding those two words would make the resolution more clear.
So, there's no material change in the intent?
Excuse me?
There's no more, there's no material change by adding that clarification?
No material change, no.
Okay, then, then I would second it.
Okay, thank you. It's been moved by Council, it's been moved by Council Rosenthal and seconded by Councilor Wong.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Thanks, President Peterson. I, I'm wondering, there's, based off of the resolutions referencing to different segments of the code, some do have the reference, some don't. I want to ask a question, why is that just like administrative, like upkeep in the language?
Shame on you. Thanks.
And, and I know that a few years ago, we also gave the council delegated authority to the COO to make these administrative language changes in, in areas like this, if I remember correctly. So, I'm just wondering if, is this something, are there, are there other areas in our code that we need to be thinking about these very important small changes?
If I could, Council Gonzalez, before Shane asks a specific, or answers your specific question, more generally, you did delegate, or you did direct the COO, together with OMA, to work on plain language and reviewing our code for updates. You didn't actually delegate the ability for her to go through the code and make those of her own accord. So, this is the time.
Sorry, we're not using the legal phrase today.
This is the time and manner in which we see them, right? And so, I, this, I think I also would just offer as background that I believe historically, and again, Shane can correct me if I, if I'm wrong, that these two fees used to be presented together, and so, we're probably seeing, you know, in this instance, maybe a loss of a unit where we'd had them elsewhere, is what I would suspect. But in any case, Shane can speak more to the specifics.
Is this on?
Yep, thanks.
For the record, Shane Adman with the Office of Metro Attorney, I use he/him pronouns. What Carrie said just a second ago, we used to have one chapter for both. It was for our solid waste fees at the transfer stations and regional system fees. We felt that was confusing because they really do fund completely different things. So, about four years ago, we separated those into two chapters. And what I think happened is the word per ton did not find its way into the regional system fee chapter, which is why it's just not explicit in the, in this resolution and why I think Council Rosenthal's amendment makes sense. So, we will go back and look at that. I do believe as, but to your point, more globally, we should always be looking at code and making updates, always, 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 always. So, we will, we intend to bring more housekeeping measures forth, and we, these are the kinds of little nits that we want to fix as we come across them. But it is a result of breaking those into two chapters to be more specific and clear.
Yeah, thanks. So, my, my new error, that could be, that could be changed, and I appreciate the intent of the resolution as it came. But also, just like understanding the legal, the, the process that we're taking here, the resolution is not adopting new language in the code, it's just language for the resolution. So, we should probably update the code, right? And that's what you're, okay, great. I just wanted to bring it back to that so that we are able to make those, those necessary changes.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Also, before we vote, I think it's appropriate for, when we have our retreat, to talk about being able to get ahead of this, not with staff, but just with the council, with some of this stuff. It's harder to do it in real time than it is to get that in front of you before we even get into council and, and then be able to give us a cleaner document. So, I would just ask our council that we have that discussion about how we think ahead and be able to have those clean copies if we found something. That's a, it's always good to clean it up in real time, that's fine, but it, it does throw it off. So, appreciate, appreciate the find, and we'll figure out a better methodology for being able to do this, because it is a small change, and it doesn't change the intent. And if it doesn't change the intent, getting a clean copy is pretty easy, so. All right, with that, George, will you please call the roll on the motion to amend? Yes. Councilor Nolan?
No.
Council Wong?
Aye.
Councilor Lewis?
No.
Council Simpson?
No.
Council Gonzalez?
No.
Council Rosenthal?
Refuse vote.
Council President Peterson. I'm sorry, did you vote?
I'll vote aye. I made the motion.
Council President Peterson.
Uh, no.
Okay, so we've, that doesn't pass, so now we are on to the motion for the resolution. George, will you please call the roll on that? Yes. Council Lewis?
Aye.
Council Nolan?
Yes.
Council Simpson?
Yes.
Council Gonzalez?
Aye.
Council Rosenthal?
No, units matter.
Council Wong?
Aye.
And Council President Peterson. Aye, the motion passes, thank you. All right, we will move on to Resolution Number 25-5489 for the purpose of adopting solid waste fees at the metro transfer stations and Metro's community enhancement fee for fiscal year 2025, '26. Do I have a motion on Resolution Number 25-5489?
Nolan moves adoption.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilor Nolan and seconded by Councilor Simpson, thank you. Any further discussion on this resolution? Yes, Council Rosenthal.
Yeah, I just want to point out that in this case, particularly, the, the motion referenced the rates as expressed, expressed in Exhibit A. This was not the case of the previous resolution, and so, the issue did not arise, I should say, the, the lack of units was there, but the issue was covered by the reference to the exhibit. So, this is a slightly different case.
Thank you for that clarification. Further discussion, George, will you please call the roll? Council Nolan?
Yes.
Council Lewis?
Aye.
Council Simpson?
Aye.
Council Gonzalez?
Aye.
Council Rosenthal?
Yeah.
Council Wong?
Aye.
Council President Peterson? Aye, the motion passes, thank you. All right, we will now adjourn to a work session. Thank you, Patrick, and thank you, Cinnamon, for walking us through that. And thank you, everybody, for.
Thank you for your good work, yeah.
Yeah, thank you for your good work. All right. We will now adjourn into the work session, and we will talk about our Future Vision Commission charge. Counselors, we've discussed in several recent meetings the ongoing process to update our 50-year future vision. Central to that process is a Future Vision Commission that develops and recommends, recommends a vision. Before we appoint the commission and approve a charge for them next month, we are here to, today to have a, to provide a direction about how this commission will conduct its work and develop the vision. Joining us today are Malu Wilkinson, Deputy Director of Planning Development and Research, and Jess Zadeb, Principal Regional Planner. Welcome.
Good morning, thank you. We are really happy to be here today. I think we have a slideshow that should come up in a moment. But again, I'm Malu Wilkinson, I use she/her pronouns, and I am the Deputy Director of Planning Development and Research, and I have Jess Zadeb here with me, who is the project manager for this effort. Okay, next slide, please. So, today, we're really happy to be here to kind of go over and review the outcomes and principles that you all identified in the last two work sessions that we had with you with our, our consultants from HRNA. This work and your conversations have helped shape the draft charge that we're developing for the Future Vision Commission. And the second item that we will be doing is to walk through the elements of the charge and the phases of the vision development that will form the commission's work. Next slide, please.
Oh, we're not going to do the, where, where this tree is located?
Oh, yes, let's go back, please. Does anyone know where this lovely oak is located?
Is it Graham Oaks?
I think it is, yeah.
President Peterson, I will say you were confident when we met before about the location.
Is it not?
Is it?
Before the next time we use this photo, I promise, we will talk to someone.
I think it's Graham Oaks.
I, I, I will put a friendly wager on a coffee if it's not.
Okay.
But I would also like to know the story of the other picture we keep using for this, of the weird people dancing in the field. I'd like to know that as well.
I believe it's a placemaking grant-funded project from a couple of years ago.
So, so the oak tree, just for, for folks that are, are wonderful audience here.
For context.
For context, in our briefing, we had staggered arrivals, and like, what a beautiful oak. And the council were at, what a beautiful oak. And we all had a, a thought it was from a different park, because I feel like I've seen that tree at Chahamlin Ridge, but hey, you know, we'll see.
Are you getting in on the, on the way?
Oh, at the viewpoint, that could be at the viewpoint.
Hey, I don't know.
I think the most important nexus is that this tree will be around in 50 years.
And a P baby.
Nicely done.
And it's been around for a lot longer.
It was there 50 years ago, too.
Thanks to the voters for the acquisition money.
That's right.
It's now under the stewardship.
Wherever, wherever it is.
All right, lesson learned, we're going to know the story of every picture that we put in front of you, but we might not today. All right, next slide, please. All right, so I just mentioned those two work sessions that we had in the spring where you talked about, you, you talked about the set of desired outcomes that you'd like to see for the Future Vision Project and the principles that, that should shape the process to develop that vision. And today, we're talking about the commission charge, which will be an exhibit to the resolution that you'll be considering in June, that will appoint the members of the Future Vision Commission. And I will just say, today, we are not talking about the members of the Future Vision Commission. That will be, that will be happening the next time. All right, next slide, please. So, just as a reminder, the, the renewed and updated future vision will be a 50-year conceptual vision for the region as required in our voter-approved charter. vision for the region as required in our voter-approved charter. This renewed vision will reflect the interests of the, of our region's residents and will provide a blueprint for the development of an implementation plan. That plan will identify and prioritize shorter-term actions that set the region on a path towards that vision, actions that could be taken by Metro or other partners around the region that could include governments, advocacy organizations, and nonprofit groups, and the business community. We know that one action will be updating Metro's regional framework plan, including the 2040 growth concept and our urban growth management functional plan, potentially the transportation functional plan. But that's not the focus of this current phase of work, since we need our renewed vision to guide that work. Next slide please. So everything that we're talking about today, I think, is this right? Okay. Everything we're talking about today is part of our vision development process, which will result in that renewed future vision. And however, we're not going to be surprised when participants in this process bring up ideas and items that are more suited to the implementation phase. And we'll record those, but I just want to keep in mind for ourselves and for our council and our participants as we move through this process, that our goal through this phase is to keep our eyes on that horizon that includes oak trees that take a long time to grow, looking out over 50 years. And with that, I'm turning it over to Jess Zadeb, our project manager.
Great, thanks Malu, good morning, Metro Council. Next slide please. So I am just going to run through kind of what you all really gave us as guidance in these last two meetings. It felt really clear to us, kind of the ideas that you all coalesced around in terms of what you want to see out of this process. Perhaps one of the most important things is that it's not just about the outcome of developing a vision, it's about doing that together and creating galvanized partners who are excited to work together toward this region's potential. For the vision itself, it's clear that what we are working toward is something that is aspirational, but supported by that actionable implementation plan. We heard an interest in ensuring that if there are separate conversations that happen about different topics within this work, that they are brought together and that this is an internally consistent document, so that we don't end up with cross kind of priorities happening across different, different parts of, of the vision. We want something that is unique to the greater Portland region. You shouldn't be able to just put someone else's name on this and send it to another region and have it apply. We also want something that's resonant and relevant to the people of this region. We don't want to walk away from this process with a document that doesn't feel like people can see themselves in it. And so we want this, we want our work to make sure that that happens as an outcome. And lastly, this vision needs to be something that is actively used by Metro and our partners to inform decisions in the region. And included in that is the implementation plan. Next slide please. So you all also had some really clear guidance about the principles that we should be using to develop this process. We're going to do our best Metro job of embodying regional coordination. In that, we are going to be presenting opportunities to unify the region around dreaming about our potential. It's no secret that, you know, the region as a whole, I mean honestly, the country as a whole and the world, we're in a tough moment. And this is an opportunity to get folks to look out at that horizon and think a little bit bigger than what we're working through right now. The process also needs to include a variety of methods and strategies to engage our core audiences. And those folks, really we want them to be part of co-developing this vision with us. And in that, we don't want to only be talking to folks who are here at Metro every day, who engage with us on a regular basis. We want to make sure that this message is getting out to and that we are hearing from those who are unfamiliar with Metro and unfamiliar with government processes. So we'll be hyper-conscious in our work of what was raised in public comment earlier today, in being transparent, plain language, making sure that things are accessible. And lastly, we will also carry the Metro torch of being data-driven in this process. Okay, so that is the, the charge that you gave to us. And now we are going to talk about the charge that you all would be giving to, to the Future Vision Commission to execute this work. Next slide please. This is the overarching process that HRNA presented in our work sessions. And so this is the framework that we've taken to think about how the Future Vision Commission will walk through their development. And we'll, we'll talk about each of these in turn. Next slide please. So the commission charge overall appears in our charter that they will be recommending a future vision to you all, directly to council. Their charge in the charter also includes this phrase that they incorporate all relevant information in public comment. And I think we've, we've tried to embody that in our more specific charge to them. And again, we want to make sure that they are focusing on the vision and looking out at that horizon, but knowing that implementation is going to be the next step. Next slide. The individuals on this body, we are expecting them to be champions of this process. We want them to be wholly bought into it and to communicate to whatever piece of the region, whatever network it is that they are plugged into. And we're assuming that these folks are plugged into multiple networks in a lot of ways. They may represent philanthropy and the business community. They may be someone who works at a nonprofit, but also sits on the board of several others. And so we want folks to be using those networks and talking to folks and representing all of those perspectives. And that is both for generating participation in this process itself to develop the vision, and then for moving forward to get folks excited about actions that would happen after the vision is in place. Lastly, we really want folks, and we actually put this in the call for applicants, that people are bringing a systems perspective. When you're thinking about a vision for the region, everything is interconnected, right? We want folks to understand that and to be coming at this work, not from only a lens of transportation, or only housing, or only conservation. All of those things are connected, so we'll be really conscious about that being the way that we talk about things in this process as well. Next slide please. So beyond those characteristics for the commission and the roles we expect them to have, you've also given guidance about the topics that are the initial seed for what this commission should be addressing. They will have agency as a body to go beyond this list of topics and themes. You know, this is a, a group that will use this as a starting place and figure out through work with us as staff, with our consultant team, honestly, which of these are topics, which are themes, which are lenses. These are not exactly all, there's a little bit of apples and oranges going on here in terms of topics and themes. But these are the seed for what we know the, the commission will be addressing, and so this will also appear in their charge. Next slide please. So in terms of the work of the commission itself, we will be expecting them to understand current conditions and critical topics. And it will be the staff and consultant team's job to provide these materials to them in various ways, whether those are reports, presentations, conversations, expert panels. Some key pieces of that that we know we'll be doing are assessments of the 2040 growth concept, both from a larger, big-picture perspective, and then also this equity audit, which was an outgrowth of the urban growth management process that you all adopted in a resolution earlier this spring. So that will be separate and earlier work that is going to be getting going later this summer, that will feed into this process. We'll also be doing a compilation of kind of existing conditions, data, and mapping. You know, we as an agency and we as government partners all across this region do a lot of planning and we do a lot of number crunching, but it's not often that those numbers actually all come together in one place to form a kind of complete picture of who we are as a region and how things are going. You know, we've got a process going on about housing and we have processes about transportation. And it's not always the case that we're presenting all of those, all of those figures and all those maps together in one place to really tell a complete story. So that's some of our early work as well, that will feed into, into the commission. All right, next slide please. Along with that, we also will have research presented to this body about trends and futures. And that includes both shorter-term trends that are a little more known. We have an aging population. What does that mean for us moving forward as a region? There are also other more emerging, faster-moving, less certain trends. What do we think know or not know about how technology is going to continue to change and influence this region, region in the world in the next 50 years? On those lines, 50 years is a long time. And we cannot be certain about what's going to happen in that time period, so we also want the commission to understand just this idea of uncertainty and be considering that along the way and figure out what that means for a vision on that timescale. All right, next slide please. And then the, the third piece of the picture to get to a vision for the region is this really critical one of making sure that it reflects community values. We have actually already had completed a lit review of 30 recent, a sample of 30 recent visions from the region and from that kind of pulled out common themes, common topics. And those are visions that were done both by government entities and non-government ones. So one reason that we did that is that we continue to ask people what they want and what they want to see here, and we don't want to just start with the same question. We don't want folks to feel fatigued. And so we'll be using that as a baseline for starting conversations about what folks want to see in the region. So that first broad outreach to the residents of the region will be to confirm and vet these values and think about whether they still apply on this longer time horizon of 50 years. Does that still make sense? And then we'll also be talking to the region very broadly about their priorities for implementation. We know that, that broad community outreach also needs to be balanced with, with the commission's role as a set of kind of key folks in this region. And so we're planning on convening them in a summit and also having a youth summit, we hope, and then some smaller group conversations as well. So the, it's really important for us to do, do our homework in pulling out those community values so that the commission can build a vision that reflects them. All right, next slide please. I just mentioned a couple of these engagement strategies. We have not by any stretch finalized exactly what these are. We will be bringing on a consultant team with this type of expertise in building a strategic communications and engagement plan. So we are providing, we would be providing them with an overarching outline and framework and getting further detail from them. Next slide please. So this is the overarching process that we would be expecting the commission to plug into and react to. As I mentioned, research, this round of broad engagement on values, a set of summits, that all leads into developing a draft vision and then doing engagement with that draft vision and getting priorities on the table so that we can head into the implementation plan. Next slide please. And just to circle back to our meetings with you this spring, we will be back here in June to work on a resolution, for you to consider a resolution that appoints the members of the council and also includes this charge as an attachment. Next slide please. Between now and then, we've got a couple smaller meetings set up with you all to talk about getting further feedback beyond today, so that you can consider that charge. What we're providing to you today in this presentation is an outline, but what we will be sending you this afternoon is actually the, the draft text of the charge itself that would appear as an exhibit to that resolution. And then you all also individually and in conversations amongst yourselves will be taking time to consider the appointees to the Future Vision Commission as well in the next couple of weeks. And then our last slide just has the questions that we'd like you to consider today. Are there, what are your reactions to this proposed division, vision development process and elements? And at least initially, your reactions about whether anything could be adjusted within this charge to better reflect what you feel like the guidance is that you've given us so far?
Great, thank you. Councilors, discussion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just one question, I just noticed in my inbox today, I received a note claiming that the 1995 vision or the 2005 vision had more negatives than positives, and that caused a lot of problems. I have no idea whether that's true. I'm sure that there were a lot of positive results. There may have been some unintended side consequences. I'm just wondering whether the commission is going to be asked to look at the old vision and the results of the old vision and use that as an informative process to identify what could have been done better, what could have been done worse, et cetera, et cetera.
Thanks for the question. I think one of the most important things about the existing vision, as distinct from the 2040 growth concept, is that very few people know the vision exists. When we started talking about this project here inside of Metro to partners around the region, this is not a document that is familiar to people, it's not something that's guided our work, the work of the region. So that's one of the biggest differences that we hope for this project, is that it is actually something that gets people around a table, moves them to action. I think that we will also be doing that work upfront to think about how the 2040 growth concept itself has performed and what, what has it brought to our region. And so that's work that we want to do now, even though the initial thing that we're doing is, is updating the vision, because the 2040 growth concept has been so central to who we are as a region, how we've developed, how we've made decisions. So there will be some moment of reflection there, certainly at the beginning, to think about how it's performed and are there things that eventually we would be changing in that growth concept?
I think, as, I just skimmed the first page, it indicated that the vision then led to a 2040 growth concept, which led to some unintended consequences. So history sometimes teaches us if we choose to look at it.
Great, thank you. Counselor Wong?
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to the team. I think you've iterated and are really capturing kind of where we want to go with this process, so I appreciate that. I guess my question and maybe comment is really around, I, I see it in like the regional, embodied regional coordination and presenting opportunities to unify the region. But I'm wondering in what ways, you know, you could really highlight the need to break down like silos and promote cross-sector collaboration? I think we see that less in our, in our, in my travels around the country. I get a sense that kind of our, you know, philanthropy, private sector, public sector, universities, like we don't collaborate in the same way as other regions might. So I wonder if you can be intentional about that? And I see, you know, you're targeting different audiences, which is important, but like, would there be spaces where you can bring various audiences together, right? And, because yeah, I think we just want to build that muscle memory of like, how do we work cross-sectorally and it's not up to government to solve all our challenges? Like, we're all in this together. And I, I really wanted to tease that up a bit more, both kind of in the language and in the process of like, you know, it's really powerful when youth and elders sit down together. It might be really powerful for, you know, philanthropy and, I don't know, corporate sponsors to sit down together, stuff like that.
Point taken. I think that we are definitely looking for opportunities to learn from other regions who do that really well and are able to kind of come together and accomplish big things. So kind of in the background, one of the things we are cooking up are, is an opportunity to learn from some of those peer regions and have that, have that information shared to, you know, council, the commission, and folks more broadly. So yes, thank you. That's something we're considering for sure.
And Counselor, I'll just add, we will
And Counselor, I'll just add, we will be giving, we will be giving a short presentation to the Social Innovation Council. I think it might be next week, and that is a group that I know you've been instrumental in bringing together with Johannes. We're working on, working with Johannes in ways to make those connections. And as you all are thinking about the potential, the potential members of the Future Vision Commission as well, that's another place where it's an opportunity to be very cross-sector. We have great candidates. And we are hoping that both the members of the commission and the way that we approach engagement can help get at exactly what you're talking about. But we'll try and work on making sure that the words are clear.
Yeah, and I think, you know, I mentioned in previous work sessions that this document should also be like, how, how do we do business in the 21st century? How do we work together? And really kind of like embody that ethos. And, you know, I think the president's work group is actually a great example of cross-sectoral collaboration, where we actually can't move forward on big things until we've gotten together and and had that consensus building and socialization of of big ideas. So that's part of how we do business, and I want to make sure that it's, that practice is more widely adopted. Thanks.
Awesome, thank you. Counselor Lewis and then Gonzalez.
Thank you. I think you've done a nice job of capturing our voices and what we've put into this process. So I don't have anything different to add today. I will say that in terms of each individual, they will undoubtedly have multiple hats. And I do think that's a strength, particularly if we let the each individual person define which hat they're wearing at which moment. And there may be times where they can wear multiple in one sentence and then have to take one or two off. I am recalling the intent that we had in the T2020 process of everybody going back to their networks and sharing so that we could iterate in real time. And it sort of worked for the people who are at the table, who were staffed by members of their organization, whether government, nonprofit, otherwise. It doesn't really work if people are kind of alone in the room. So I think we need to think through how we work with secondary contacts. I think we also need to think through how to make bite-sized takeaways. So if we do a meeting that has 18 slides, which are the three slides that that person might print off and actually like hold up when they meet with their partners in another context? Or what is the one-minute rap that we could write for them that summarizes not only the topic, but the thing that needs to be decided or discussed by the next meeting? So I think there's a toolkit that we have to generate, or else we're not going to get back and forth. And by the time we learn how to do it, our 18 months will be up. That's my only thought.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Counselor Gonzalez.
One-minute rap or is it the second video? I don't know.
Sorry, another inside joke from this morning.
The video wasn't my idea. I was the one-minute idea. It was like, we called a transit minute, one minute.
Yeah, yeah, right. Well, just to like try and put a bow on it, what a special opportunity for us to have to talk about what we want for our region and for our families and for future. So I I just appreciate all the hard work that's gone into this and the pre-scoping and the scoping. Just like for sake of asking a question, can you talk to us about the conversations that we've had with groups around how we've wanted to activate some of the council feedback in terms of how we want to lay out the 18-month process, some of the groups that we've spoken to and things like that to make sure that we're being representative in the design of the process?
Are you referring to conversations that we've gotten to have with a couple, like, key?
Yeah.
Partners leading into this? Sure. So it's been really helpful to have counselors convene these conversations to lead into developing this process. And so we did have a chance to sit down with a couple of groups. So we we sat down with Coalition of Communities of Color, Thousand Friends of Oregon, TRIMET leaders, a couple of folks who were around this process back in 1995. So learning from that, I am missing at least one.
Members of the business community, and then I think we're still working on a meeting with both arts-focused and sports-focused groups.
Yeah, and so, you know, that is the start of embodying this desire to create a process where we're having conversations across each of these really key areas and hearing from folks about what they, what they want to see us do with this work from their perspective. So, you know, and those are, those are just a very few groups. You know, we all have limited capacity, but it felt like with getting this going, knowing that some of our focus areas need to be considering how we, how we grow as a region, how we use the land that we have here, how we interact with the environment, how we interact with the really diverse populations that are represented here, and acknowledging that, you know, for decades, transit has really been a backbone of who we are as a region. And we we felt like, you know, that conversation with TRIMET is really important, too. And and obviously recognizing that they're also not the only transit provider in the region, but they are the largest. So it was a helpful chat to have with them as we got going.
Yeah, thanks. I, you know, just kind of building off of what Counselor Wong mentioned, I think that like the the plan and the process itself is really important and excited, but it's also about like, what new muscles can we build as a region to position ourselves for, you know, this next chapter of opportunity? It's just really, what a, what a time to be alive. So I look forward to working with you on this and can't wait for the council to be engaged and help provide some hope and spark and vision in this time where we really need it.
Awesome. Counselor Rosenthal.
Yeah, thanks, Madam Chair. Just I just want to say that I appreciate the work that's gone in, the thoughtfulness that's gone into developing this process. I think it's a very thoughtful process, and I think it ought to be very interesting and perhaps a lot of fun. And I will just reference Forrest Gump, "A vision is like a box of chocolates. You never know what you're going to get."
Especially in a 50-year one.
All right. Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Simpson.
Thank you. Thank you, Jess. Thank you, Malu Waka, for your thoughtfulness as we do this, we head into this. Y'all know how I feel about this. I didn't say it on the record a number of times, but how are we and who, you know, as we think about, and I know we're not talking roster, but more so like the process around economic, uplifting economic opportunities, to the point of Counselor Wong, Counselor and Counselor Gonzalez, like, that is a muscle that we've not flexed very well, and I feel like it's pretty anemic. And so I'm like, how do we pump this up for this process? Because we know that like, for anything to be successful, we need a economic engine, some financials behind it. And so like, part of this process for me is like securing what our financial future looks like for the region. That's, that's my comment. That's all I got.
I appreciate that. And I appreciate, and I'm also, I I believe that the the work that that you're leading right now, Counselor Simpson, to help define, to help to define where we want to go in terms of economic development is is going to be really helpful in this process, and it will, it will inform as we're thinking about 50 years. But I don't, we definitely need the shorter-term vision when it comes to supporting a thriving economy in our region, because 50 years is a long ways out.
I, I absolutely. And I think, you know, we, when we do planning, oftentimes we have, you know, we need, have immediate needs right now. But as we think about 50 years, right, again, AJ is going to be 62. Jesus, 63. I know, in 50 years, I know.
He will be done and retired.
Technically, I am retired now.
But if you still have retirement.
You're going to be chairing some board somewhere.
If I'm, well, in 50 years, I'll be 90, if God willing, I'm alive. So let's just, let's start there. Anyway, in 50 years, right, I think about not just the, our strength, like, our strength and who we are as a region, but like how people make it for themselves. And I'm sure that's going to change, but I hear you on the immediate need. It's those middle and long-term needs that we have to start planning for. So we aren't, you know, looking like a bump on a log when everybody's getting funded and money's flowing and we're kind of sitting back like, well, what about ours? Right? I want us to really be mindful of that because we find ourselves in that kind of position right now, today, around a lot of things.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else? All right, seeing none. Thank you for getting us this far. Appreciate, appreciate the the amount of work that's gone into getting us to this point. You'll be back then with a proposed list of folks, to seat on a commission, and what was the other part? The charge? Great, thank you. See you then.
Thank you.
Yep. All right, we'll move on to Chief Operating Officer Communication.
Thank you, President Peterson. My only update today is just to reiterate my thanks to everyone who joined the town hall this morning. I think we had, you know, over 100 folks this morning and over 300, almost 400 yesterday at our, at our other scheduled, scheduled event. We will post recordings of those for our employees as well as complete Q and A's on the website, on the MetroNet in a couple of days. Just really appreciate you, President Peterson and Deputy Council President Simpson, for attending. It means a lot for our workforce to hear from you directly. So I appreciate you making that time. And, you know, just always, it's a, it's a nice time to to ground and connect and hear what's on employees' minds and hopefully we get, you know, we'll get everybody's questions answered. And certainly if folks have thought of more in between or afterward, or still have questions after they watch the recordings, feel free to reach out to our office and we'll make sure we get those answered. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselors, any communications? Counselor Lewis?
Yes, I wanted to share with everybody, it was a monumental day in Clackamas County yesterday as we cut the ribbon on Clackamas Village. It is a site that will be transitional housing and supportive services for 24 individuals. It is right off of Jennifer Street, and those of us who have been to a site that we used to spend a lot of time thinking about, literally the next-door neighbor, and also adjacent to Clackamas's Veterans Village. But the opportunity to celebrate this with the governor, with community leaders, with the nonprofits who do great work in Clackamas County. We cut the ribbon and, you know, it was completely built with SHS dollars and about one and a half million dollars of ongoing operations from SHS as well. So it's a first for Clackamas County in that it is for those individuals experiencing homelessness with the greatest need, with pod sort of housing and a good connection to services staff 24/7. So a big day for housing in Clackamas County. I also wanted to report back that the tri-county planning body met yesterday evening. I was trying to meet with a Mac genius because my child dumped a liquid all over my computer. So I only did like a 50% listening in, but two big things that I was able to catch. One, the report will be coming out shortly that summarizes all six planks. It's being written by a consultant with the tri-county planning body themselves, authoring a cover letter. And then secondly, the plank that was deeply discussed and interrogated yesterday had to do with wages and training for the nonprofit service providers and direct service. Folks at the table spoke up that it's definitely not sufficient to look at training as an academic exercise if it's not attached to real credentials that guarantee a real move up the ladder with real money. So I think that's something we've counsel voiced in the past, but the opportunity to actually make these services sustainable and a career and not just a job is really going to be critical to the longevity. And I think that there's a tension that is being unearthed and will require some serious political leadership. And we were getting called in on that yesterday. I'm sure something else happened in the last 30 minutes of the meeting, but again, I didn't attend to the very end. Thank you.
Thank you, baby.
Yeah, thank you.
Counselor Gonzalez.
Yeah, we had our J-PAC meeting this morning. We have a really busy agenda this month and next month. We're meeting two times each, each this May and in June. We were able to have a conversation on Regional Flexible Fund, Step Two Bond allocations, which funds programs and, I mean, projects throughout the, throughout the region, and then had a presentation on Montgomery Streetcar and TV Highway LPAs, which are moving into action for J-PAC and eventually Metro Council to amend the RTP to include those projects and in their next phases. So that's all very exciting. And also gave Betsy the thumbs up on a surface reauthorization bill framework. So some good work and appreciate all the folks that woke up early to make it in person. We are making an effort to meet in person more frequently, especially when there's major decisions on the table, and I think people are appreciating that. So we're, we're trying to find that that new balance going forward.
Thank you. Counselor Rosenthal.
Yeah, just a brief update. As many of you may know, recently, the one senator that represents part of our district, Senator Erin Woods died, and so he has been replaced by Courtney Neuron-Mims. I heard her new last name incorrect, I don't remember the spelling. But at any rate, she's been a strong supporter for some of the, some of the communities in our district, in my district particularly, to King City and Sherwood and Wilsonville. And so she will be a strong voice there. They're in the process of selecting her replacement, who is, has the unenviable and unenviable position of coming into the legislature with 1,700 bills in the last 40 days of the legislative session. That's going to be a real tough, heavy lift for them. But at any rate, I look forward to more support for the, some of the district, some of the cities in my district.
Awesome. Anybody else? Okay, so there was some bad news coming from the zoo this week. Moshu, our red panda, who was quite elderly, passed away. And he was beloved by a lot of, not only our zoo keepers, but a lot of the public. And I'm just going to read a little bit from the reporting in the Oregonian. Moshu's tiny stature, curly whiskers and red, white and black fur endured him to many. The zoo frequently posted videos of the red panda even starting a campaign called Moshu Mondays, featuring up-close photos, and at times he would boop the camera with his black nose, stick his tongue out and munch on snacks like bamboo and apple slices. His nickname was Snackalots. And he became a celebrity when U.S. Senator Ron Wyden took time to visit him. The zoo wrote in a video dedicated to Moshu that he'll be remembered for his sweet personality and love for apples. So if we can just take a moment to remember in our thoughts, Moshu, and reach out to everyone that you know at the Oregon Zoo to give condolences, we'll just take a minute. Thank you. Awesome. We will adjourn, and our next regularly scheduled meeting is Tuesday, May 20th at 10:30 a.m. And I hope that all of the pollen and the air is cleaned out at some point soon so I can talk. Thank you, everybody.